For Tuesday, May 23, 2023. Let's see, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Ben Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does term. Coram number one, consider proving the on sale weekday and on sale Sunday liquor license renewals for following applicants, River Center 15, Mishwire, Byron Grill, Little Bangkok. Is there a motion? Move by Rehappel.
Agreed.
Second by Holmes. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson. Fetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Rehappel.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number two, consider proving off sale and tasking liquor license renewal for Hugo's Wine and Spirits located at 31014th Street Northeast, East Grand Port. Move. Move by Holmes. Second by Rehappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Fetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Rehappel.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Number three, consider adopting resolution 23-05-37, proving the year end transfers for budget year 2022. Move. Move by Rehappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Fetter.
Yes.
Pakshavinsky.
Yes.
Rehappel.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes. Motion is carried. Entertained motion adjourned. Move. Move by Larson. Second by Holmes. Holmes, favorably say hi.
Hi.
Hold with same sign. Motion is carried. Mean as adjourned. Call to all this. City Council work session for the CV's grant for Van Forks for Tuesday, May 23, 2023. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter.
Here.
Ben Pakshavinsky.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Yep.
Brian Larson.
Yes.
Karen Peterson.
All right. This term. Coram number one, discussion on sick leave accrual fund. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. The other thing I want to add on that is we're also talking about in change and how we are adopting investments at year end. So I have a lot to cover. There's a lot of numbers. Please let me know if you have questions. You can gladly slow it down or go back. So it's just, there's a lot of information. So the big sheet, sorry, killed the tree. This is actually recap of our Fund 705, which is a benefit accrual fund. And it is used for sick leave accrual, sick leave benefits that we give to employees. Employees at first and prior negotiations, they could have up to 1,280 hours that they could get reimbursed once they ended service with the city. 2010, that changed where there is a max of 960. And if you, no, excuse me, there was a different year, sorry. 960 is the new balance for that, which some of employees are at. And then there also is another negotiation was that if you leave, if you were hired after 2010 and you leave the city, you will only get severance for half of your sick leave. You will get reimbursed for all your vacation, but only half of your sick leave. And vacation is capped at 160 hours per year, just so everybody knows that. So on the spreadsheet, I have on here in the top what the cash balances for this fund. Then I have on here the severance that have gone out and then accruals according to changes in people's or employees' sick leave every year. So in 2012 was the last year that there was a transfer from the general fund to the 705 fund. You can see that is under S L Benefit Service Charge of $90,616.95. So that was a year that Huizengay left. Huizengay was the city administrator at the time. He did actually most of the budgeting. He put the whole spreadsheet together. And he worked with our HR on sick leave severance. We also have a 3% contribution, if you look a little farther down the row, for healthcare savings plan, which is H C S P of 3% every year. So in addition to the severance payouts going out, which is highlighted in the yellow, there was also payments at the bottom to the H C S P of 3% contributions. So if you go across that line in 2021 and 22, there was not a payment made out of this fund. So this had just came to my attention. It was oversight I should have caught. But what we're doing with that now is that we are paying that out of everybody's own department budget. So it's coming out of their department. And there is a line for sick leave contribution. That is something we'll be budgeting starting in 2024. Terry and I, the HR person, are looking at the way to make that easiest and come with the best number because nobody has any idea what their sick leave would be at the end of the year, but we have a best guess. So we will be budgeting for that. It will not be coming out of this fund. It will be coming out of the general fund and it will be within their budgeted area, department area. So if you go now to the top again, sorry, we're jumping here and there. The cash balance as of 2022 is $2,203,000 and the liability is $799,487. So the difference of that is $596,000. And so when we did the first transfer, the original transfer that I had on your list, I had suggested to move to $111,806 from the general fund to this fund to start catching it up because we really should have, our cash balance should cover what our liability is. And Clarence, you can pipe in anytime to as an accountant in here. So that was what I had planned on when we talked in our budgeting for 2024. I had put in a number of $50,000, just maybe to put in every year, just to get us going on that. There has not been any loss of dollars. The only difference is, is that the general fund dollars are holding these liabilities in the general fund balance. So we had, didn't make the move from the general fund fund balance to the 705 account. So there was no loss of money. It was just that we don't have the cash matching the liability in the same account. Other cities don't even have a fund like this. Some cities just have, when they do their statement, they have a line, a sign for sick leave benefit payouts. So like I said, again, there was, there's no loss of dollars. It's just that this $596,000, if everybody was to leave and we had to pay them all off, then that would come out of our general fund li, fund balance. Questions on that? Okay, so then the reason, the way I came up with the 211 was if you want to look at this budget paper. So when I ran our net income, basically, so I ran the revenue and expenses. I had came up with expenses over revenue of $243,000. And we have actually had budgeted in 2022 to use some of our reserve to keep our levy down of $457,456. So that's how I came up with the 211 so that we could start putting into this fund and get it closer to where the liability is and really stay within what we had budgeted for 2022. Okay, well, since then, this has been a pet peeve of mine for years, actually, is that investments that are held with a investor have been told we have to adjust our year end amount to market. Even though we got something from the league saying that if there's certificates of deposits and such, you can carry them at par. And I have asked them, they said you have to check with your auditor. We actually, I was actually involved in a webinar this last week with the Office of the State Auditor's Office, and they were actually talking about this. So I put in a little chat box, asked a question. And the presenter said you'd have to check with your auditor. So after that presentation, I actually got a call from a security place and they told me how in one city, their finance director drove to all these different cities and banks and picked up a local C E D, a certificate of deposit, because that wouldn't fall under the guidelines that they could keep that at par. So they literally went to all these different banks. And I said, I don't have enough banks to go to to do that. And then you would have to stay with the FDIC rule of $245,000 so that you're covered if anything happened to the bank. Well, then I got an email from a gentleman who used to work for the Office of the State Auditor, now works for a city in Minnesota. And he told me how when he worked for the Office of the State Auditor, they allowed a county to keep them at par because they were not buying these as investments to buy and sell or to, you know, try play with the market. And we have our investment set up on a ladder. So some come due in two years, some come due in three years, some come due in five, six, or seven years. And we do not sell them early. The only way we would sell them early would maybe at the most be a week or so if we were short on cash. And we have not had to do that. So I presented this to our auditors and they sent me an email just at the end of the week that they agreed and we could keep them at par value. So as an example, when you look at the final statement for our investments, so the change in value from January 1st to December 31st was $1.6 million. So now we went back and we adjusted all those accounts. For example, the perpetual cemetery account was at a neg, their investment interest was a negative 8,000 something. And when we changed it to par, they were actually making $5,000. I know Reed had a meeting last week and it came up. So I immediately called him today and made him happy. So just in the general fund alone, that change, so before the change, we were $382,000 in the hole. With the change, we were 107 to the good. So that change just in the general fund is $489,000. So this other document that I printed, it's two sided with the yellow on it on the bottom. So with the new numbers, $245,000 now is a net income that we have gotten for 2022 because of that change in interest. And we had actually budgeted for 450 here on this report, it says 455, but on our actual budget, it's 457. And so I spoke with Olsted and Rehappel this morning. And my original was a 211 just to get it going. I guess the question for you is, is how much would you like to fund it? To get it up to actual cash making, matching liability would be $596,000. If we did that, our reserve, we would have to use 350 of our reserve and we have budgeted 455 for reserve. So we would actually stay within our budget for 2022 if that was what you chose to do. So I know what the next question is going to be. How does this affect 2024? Oh, first, I want to tell you about 2023 because we had some more good news today. So, or this week, I should say. So Chief Headlin gave us information today that the legislature has increased the police state aid for 2023. So I had actually budgeted 200,000 because we really don't have an idea from year to year because they, maybe, and I know the chief could explain that better, but that depends on how many you hire and this and that. So I just try to be consistent. And so I budgeted 200,000. We have been notified that we will be receiving $398,000 instead, which is a change of $198,000. So if we look at our budget sheet again, in 2023, we are planning, we had planned to use $150,559 of our reserve to balance 2023. So if everything were to stay the same, like most years, that 189,000 would wipe out that 150 that we would need for 2023. Questions on that? Okay, so now we're going to go to 2024. And yes, the finance, the ad hoc finance committee have been working on this. We are by no means complete. We don't have the study back, the salary study back. So on this page, we have incorporated a 6% increase in salaries, which would include if there's difference in the salary study because, or whatever on that part. We have included a 10% possible insurance premium rate, which according to the city, we have, we split that 4% and we play the 4% increase and then we split the difference. So Terry, N H R has already factored that in. We just got notice that our LGA is going up $225,000 in 2024. So that is in this number. I know that you all had asked us to put in a 5% levy. So that's what it is on the top. So if you go from the top to the bottom, if everything were to stay the same, our revenues, our expenses would exceed our revenues by $480,000. So if we choose to not make any more changes, that's what we would ask to take out of our reserve. By no means saying that. And just as a note in the pink, I just wanted everybody to know that, that $518,000 of the increase on this page is from payroll. That does include the 3% healthcare savings plan that we will be taking out of budgets now. And it does include 50,000 to cover in case we, depending on what we're doing for funding for the 705 fund. So that is included this amount. I did also look at what we adopted for 2023. And with the reserve used for 2022 and the reserve used for 2023, if we did use those, our projected fund balance would be $6,195,000. And that would be 49% of our revenue or 48% of our expenses. And that is within the state guidelines. The state guideline actually wants us below 50. So between 35 and 50. So questions, anybody? Or probably lots of questions. Where to start?
First thought I have is, you know, when we are willing to show a deficit as a bottom number on our budget, we're always hoping that savings will be found through the year and that deficit could be less than that number. So I don't, and I know you're trying to do it right to stay inside of our budgeted number, but I don't really feel a duty to spend to that or even close to that deficit amount because we've always hoped that, again, maybe revenues would come higher, expenses would come lower, we could close that gap in actuality at year end. So I guess that's it. I don't feel a duty to spend that deficit or necessarily like it's a smart thing to do, maybe a part of it, but not necessarily to this degree.
Okay, so can I explain? I didn't explain it very well. So we wouldn't be spending the deficit. If we don't move this money to the 705 fund, we will have to designate in the general fund that we are holding this in reserve to fund these, to fund that liability. And I, by no means is suggestion that we use all of that 457. I'm just saying we can pick a random number. If we chose to cover all of the liability, we would use 350. So we would not use all we had budgeted. But if we don't put anything in that fund, when we do budgeting, we will have to subtract out the liability amount that we haven't funded because these are liabilities that we have to carry. They're not spent. And we would still have to reduce that when we do our budgeting. So when we look at this fund balance that I always do in this, I would have to reduce our fund balance less that amount to see where we are at.
But it wouldn't have to show up in operations for that year.
Yeah, no, it would not. It would, no. And so we wouldn't be able to use it for operations in any year until it's fully funded. And what we would do from, if we did fully fund it, then we need to, when we figure out our sick leave accrual for employees, we'll need to figure out how much change in the sick leave has happened and how much we need to do to fund it, to match liabilities again. So the question is, is do we want to fully fund this account partly with, with the idea that we're going to have to put this in our budgets in the future to fund that? So if we don't, say, say we moved all the money, then we won't have to put it in 2024. If we do not do that, we will need to put something in 2024 as a transfer to that account.
Some number.
Start covering it.
Some number, whether it's 100,000 or 150 or 200. You could climb back in three to five years or you could do it in one fell swoop.
Well, and I know Clarence and I talked about that. The problem is that we need to look at where people are at, and I hate to say age, but where they're planning retiring. And we need to look to see how many are close and what we feel that fund needs to cover those severances in the next year or two.
Good. And you bring that and that'll help us to decide what we want to do now and what we want to do, say staging it out over three to five years. Thank you.
One of my things, when we met this morning and she talked about the 211, so that would leave 2022, I guess, at a positive number, $34,000. In what she changed it to, to catch up, we're at negative 350. My discussion this morning was not to do the full amount. Mine was to do that, if we did the 211, we'd have to look at what we'd budget. She suggested $50,000 a year. I would probably look at doing something, but what that number is, and we also talked about, okay, when are people retiring? What ages do we have? Went through all this gamma before she called Clarence. So the thing that we need to look at is making sure that this year and next year, we look at who is going to be retiring or maybe possibly retiring to make sure that we're covering it. And then we can build from there what we need to do. This was on the transfers. I asked to be polled because we needed to have discussion on it. And the council needs to make that decision, what we're doing. It has to come from the council of how we're going to handle this. We just can't throw and correct it and have our bail suffered, you know, for the next two, three years. So I would like to see a plan put in place where we, I don't have a problem if we go back because with the changes in the investments to par, I mean, we're getting rid of what we would use for reserve in 2022. So we're looking at positive 245. And we still will look at a net income of 24,000 for 2022. But I think we really, is it going to be five years? Is it going to be six years, whatever it may be?
Some number of years.
Whatever it is.
Yep.
So we need to look at that. I mean, so you're looking at 596 total, so 211, so you had what, 385 roughly? And what do you spread that over? And I know continually we'll still have to also budget and make sure that these are being moved also. It's not showing. So I guess that's something that I would want to look at is doing it over a couple of years, you know, with how many years that is. But I'd like to see a few models where it is five years, maybe it's six years, maybe it's seven, whatever it may be. But I think that's something that I would like to take a look at. So I don't know what everybody else thinks. So, Mr. Larson?
I guess just a question on that. Would it be a few years of covering the annual expected severance payout as well as a portion of the unfunded liability?
We talked about also what we have to cover.
Right. So when I said 50, it probably would be more like 100 because if you look at, guess when people are going to retire?
Yeah.
So when, like in the next five years, there's probably going to be 10.
Sure.
Probably more than that.
We do that high level, probably a conservative analysis, and then we would, you know, say, okay, we need to wipe out this unfunded liability over five years or something. So we add that to the annual costs. And then after year five, we're hopefully caught up and then this amount would go down because we've funded this.
Well, we're going to have to make a funding amount every year, but the amount should go down because people are only getting reimbursed for 50% of their sick leave instead of 100%.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay.
And the only reason I threw this out there was, you know, this would be one way to just fund it now and not have to worry about doing it in the budget, which will also make it look worse. You know, if you, you've got rid of it, we don't, we only put in there what, you know, little bit amount of the change. And, and I don't know what your perception or, you know, the citizens' perception is, is that, you know, we aren't dipping into our reserve maybe at all. So, but that's your choice. But we still would have to basically take it, assign it as part of the general fund balance. So it's not like we're losing any money or paying anything off. We're just, I hate to say it's accounting function, and Clarence could probably even explain that better, that we're just putting the money where it needs to be funded and there's no loss or gain on either side. It's just the money is going where it's funded.
Anybody else have any questions?
I mean, does everybody want to see a timetable of a couple of years, five years and go from there? Or what's everybody's wishes they want to do? Because it's got to be decided by the council.
Yeah, I'd like to look at five years would be one option, open to a couple others, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think we look at a couple of years. Do we know if we had like six employees say they want to retire tomorrow, what does this fund look like? Any idea?
That's what we'd have to look at.
Okay, we haven't even gotten that far.
Right. But if you look at some of the years back, so like, and let's see. Yeah, 2017, was it like 167,000 or 217 was $175,000?
But then look at 2016, it's $2,000. Like, you know, what do you do?
Sure, yeah. I think, like Mark said, we look at multiple different ways, whether it's three years or five years. I don't think we pay it off today.
Making sure we can cover it in the near term. Do your analysis. I'd feel good with that.
Is everybody okay with like the two, doing the 211? So then the balance would then be, you know, 414?
Yep.
I guess the other thing to.
Look at the balance of that paying out over some years.
To keep in mind is that, you know, we, when we budgeted that, we also talked about getting the fund balance below that 50% threshold because I know at one time the state didn't like that we had. Sometimes they don't like when you have too much money. You don't need the money then. So there's a lot of scenarios. If you did move the money, then the fund balance, the general fund balance doesn't have that and it would be below 50. So when I've done all my, you know, when we took out the 457 from 2022 and the 150 from 2023, our, our total revenue is still 49% and our expense is a 48% of our fund, our fund balance of that. And that would put us over 50. So just keep that in mind. So just keep that in mind. I mean, I'm, I'm not giving you any recommendations, but I just want to give you all the scenarios so, you know, that we know that. And I know with the increase in the LGA that they, you know, want us to keep our liability down, which we're, you know, desperately working on, so.
Mr. Vetter?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Carla, through the audit process, we're going to analyze that liability account to determine what the balance should be, and there will be adjustment every year, I'm assuming, through the audit?
Yes.
Is that adjustment, let's say the liability is low, so now we have to book an expense to bring it back up to where it needs to, is that expense going to the general fund? Or is it going to this benefit accrual fund?
There is, there's no expense in the general, the, I take that back. In the past, what they did was, they had tried to figure out where the change was, was in each department. So there was a sick leave contribution, which was hard to budget, up and down, so I haven't, and right now, we're going to use that for the 3% healthcare savings plan. And Terry and I haven't really discussed on, you know, do we throw that in there and try to come up with a number, or do we just look at a transfer amount from the general fund?
In 21 through the audit, when we made the adjustment to the liability count, it got spread out to all the departments. You made the analysis, said, please had this much?
No.
Nope?
No.
So where did that adjustment go then?
It just went in within this fund.
Just within the fund, so the liability on the fund. Okay. I know where it's at now.
I thought maybe you're just trying to think of the words or something.
Ben?
Yeah. I think I'd like to see, you know, do we want to do 211, or do we want to do a different amount, maybe a higher amount, but not necessarily paid off, off all at once? Is there, I don't think there's a super big hurry to make a decision next week about moving the 211, right?
And we don't have a meeting next week. So it's, but the decision would need to be done within six?
Well, whenever the next decision is made.
Right, and that's because this has to be, this has to be decided before they can do our statement.
Okay.
And they're, they're planning on presenting it on the June 13 meeting.
Okay.
And you can, you know, you can call me, we can sit down, I can show you. I, I know it's a lot to take in and-
Yeah, I, I guess I don't want to put a whole ton of extra work on your plate.
Oh, no, no.
It's going to take a little bit to come up with different models, but-
And we're going to really have to do that anyway for, for this fund is really, anyway. So it's something we'll just have to get a handle on. And, and it's a guess, you know? Nobody knows when anybody's going to leave.
I do have one question. What's, like, when, when Scott was here, and what does 2008, 2009, and 2010 look like on this form?
It was funny, when I ran the report, I couldn't run the detail for 2012, so, but I can get to it. But I can, I can truly do that. And I, I would guess it's at least 100,000 every year.
So I'm assuming with, we go back to 10, nine, and eight, we're going to see this fund growing, so.
Yeah, and if you see, I mean, you can see our liability is getting less, and that's because of those employees that'll get 50%.
But I'm assuming money was going in.
Yes. So, you know, once you pay off the employees that are getting 100%, it should be less.
Any other, any other direction, or do you have enough, Carla?
No, I will check to see what we can plan on for severance for the next five years, and then I will send that out before a meeting, so then people can review it, correct? Any other kind of? So any employees that, I mean, don't give me an idea when they want to leave, that would surely help.
Do we count?
Pardon?
Do we count?
Yeah, well, thank you, everybody, for your-
Thanks, Carla.
Move on to number two, update from Metropolitan Planning Organization. Self-heard.
Evening. Press the blank button, right? This just takes me a second to get things open. There's it in your packet, but then you wouldn't be able to see the pictures move, so you won't fall asleep on me.
Just pretend.
You didn't need that coffee after all.
Maybe.
All right, so, like in your, I guess you call them the RCAs or staff reports, this is really just like a MPO 101. I know there's some new people in this group that probably haven't, know exactly what a MPO is, as well as just a refresher of just what we've been up to. So this is just what that conversation is. I know Nancy said it's going to be a two-hour presentation, but she was lying, it's more like a 30-minute, 80 slides, but no, just not really. So really, the MPO started and conversation in 1964, Congress knew there was some transportation conversations happening. They wanted to house where we were talking about comprehensive, cooperative, and continuing, so the three Cs. So in 1973, they decided they needed to have a housing organization to house us, so the MPO was created. So that's kind of us in a nutshell. We've been around since early 70s, well, the MPO. So this is, what do we mean by the three Cs? So we look at the past, we reevaluate what's been done, what plans we've done, and we look at those and use them towards what we want, how we want to plan for the future. So also, we look at bringing everyone together for the conversation. This is not just our opinions, but this is everybody working together. We also look at different modes of transport, transportation, how we travel and study them. So it's the bike and ped, it's the transit, it's the, your basic car. So I guess, in a nutshell, think of us as like a special tool for your community's toolbox. This is something we hope that you would look at us a little bit more often than what has been in the past. We're really just kind of information data organization to help you make those tough decisions that you face, especially when it comes with land use and transportation. So we're just here to help you support making those right decisions. We're not the only MPO in the state of North Dakota. There's currently three others, Bismarck and Fargo. Minot just became, while they're going through the process this year, of looking at becoming an MPO. So they'll be up and going more likely in next year, where they'll start looking at MPO funding. So there'll be four of us in the North Dakota side. But we are a by-state MPO, so we also look on the Minnesota side. There's a lot more on that side, as well as larger ones, but those are all the ones listed. There's a few other by-state ones, too. Being an MPO, we receive federal funding. 80% of our funding comes from the federal government and 10% from each city. So with that, we have activities that we're required to do to get that funding. One being what's called the UPWP, or the Unified Planning Work Program. This kind of goes over how we're going to spend that funding and how it pertains to the three Cs. There's also the Transportation Improvement Program, also known as the TIP. So this is a list of projects, transportation projects that are done in the MPO planning area. We do this by yearly. This has to match up with the state list, and that's how a lot of your federal funding comes through. So there's also the MTP, or the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is called. This houses the street and highway plan, bike and ped, transit, and a few other plans like that. And that just looks at the transportation plan as itself. Then there's, again, there's the Public Participation Plan. We're very much about bringing everyone together, making sure everyone's being heard and from all walks of life. So a lot's been going on this past, it's already been a year, if you can believe it. So what we have going on right now is the bike and pedestrian plan is getting finalized. We'll see this in the next month, where I'll start the approval process. The street and highway plan, you will be seeing at the end of the year for final approval. But next month, it'll be coming forward for an update, as well as there'll be an upcoming public input meeting. There was also the transit plan that we adopted at the beginning of the year. We're always talking about a new bridge, and we've been talking about this since the 70s. We're not leading that discussion right now, but it's nice that we're invited and part of that conversation. It was probably, I want to say, like, two weeks, maybe a month into my position, I got notified that we're getting a Title VI audit. So I guess I don't know if that calls us lucky, or drew the short end of the straw, but we came through that just fine. It helps to have some good fellow staff members part of the MPO, so everyone kind of stepped up, and we made that work. So that was just fine. We also gave our work program a little facelift, a little bit different. There's a few other tweaks we want to do, but we started kind of making a little bit different changes. So I want to just keep touching on that the MPO is here to help make those tough transportation decisions and give you that information and data that you need. But again, we cannot come up with this data information alone, and we don't want to. So that's why we have our technical advisory committee. They help us, well, they bring different views to the table and, and different information. So together, they help us navigate some plans and recommendations, and then they give their recommendations to our board. So this is made up of leadership for either side of, of the river, and they help make our decisions for the MPO area. So as we've been going through and looking at all this and been doing all this stuff, we've also been observing, just kind of self-reflecting and giving an extra listen as we're going through these processes past year, and kind of asking ourselves the question, why this way? Is this working for our partners? Should we be changing things a little bit different? Are we being, I guess, basically our best versions of ourselves and what we can be for the community? What should we be doing differently to kind of be our best versions of ourselves for you guys, so you can get what you need by data information? Also, we've been looking at some opportunities that have been kind of, that we haven't seen before, as well as people wanting to come and work with us a little bit more. One of them was called the SMART grant. We joined with, which is, they're called Upper Great Plains, they're out at NDSU, and the Fargo MPO, and we put in a joint application to look at I-29, and looking at doing a plan for TMZ, and just kind of updating technology along from the Canadian border all the way to South Dakota. Fortunately, we did not get that grant, but I still take it as a win that, that's something we've never done before. So we put in a joint application, and that more kind of thinking outside the box and working together. Also, working with UND, we've done internships with them in the past, and we're currently working with a joint intern right now. We also put in an application for state, one that's called Safe Streets for All, or SS4A. We did get awarded that grant, and that was a joint application with both cities and the MPO. So that is for a safety action plan, and that will get going in the near future. So that was exciting that we got awarded that. And then I guess I open up to any questions. I just didn't want to take up too much of your time, but kind of reintroduce myself and kind of give you a taste of what we've been up to, and open up to any questions you might have about the MPO. I just kind of, one of the things that we've been hearing this past year is, maybe not everyone knows exactly what the MPO does and what our role is, so I just kind of want to make myself available and give them an update.
Sure.
Yeah?
I think historically, we've looked at the MPO and the whole planning process as the very strategic arm of what we do as a city, you know, for the fact finding and the, kind of, the, take it away a little bit from the politics and put it more into what's really strategic and, and long-range viewing. You know, sometimes in the political process, we're trying to mop up last year's budget and next year's budget, but you all bring a really nice ability to cast a look forward at, you know, what are our needs going to be for land use and transportation and whatnot? And then the study that you're doing, I know in the industrial park, we're all kind of sitting on the edge of our seat, waiting for the results of that. And that's you at your best also, you know, where you are studying an area, and probably a much greater area, but we're really interested in that industrial park piece of it. To me, again, that's a function that you all do very well, and it, again, it comes back into our ability then to make those short-term decisions fit into the long-range plan. So I say it's really good what you're doing, and you can probably tweak it, but I'd say stay on track, because we need the product of your work.
Any males have anything?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Button again.
Three D O five second, no minutes. Discussion requesting bonding for recreation facilities, redundant.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. President. So when I put together this RCA, we hadn't got any update on the local sales tax, so I'll start there. The legislature did approve us to move forward with the vote for the local sales tax increase that we've talked a lot about. So that's good news, and that may, may or may not change how you all feel about putting in a bonding request. So I just wanted more than anything put in front of you that the process has opened to request bonding through the state's capital budget process. The deadline to submit requests, the initial deadline is June 16th. There is opportunity to edit that request as time goes on up until a final deadline of, middle of October of this year. But at any rate, it's open with an opportunity, so if we want to be able to follow the formal governor's process of getting in the governor's budget recommendation for bonding, we need to work fairly quickly on that. Good news is, is that we have a lot of the data already put together. We've engaged the community and community input on our recreation facilities. We have a lot of the budget work done with the work of JLG and construction engineers, so it's just a matter of determining if we want to put in a request and at, at what dollar amount, what kind of aspects of it to go in. In the packet that was presented with the RCA, on the first page of that, the instructions, there is eight bullet points that list out kind of what the priorities of the governor's office are in making requests for the budget. And as I review those, I feel pretty strongly that our, our projects, as we've talked about them, and reinvesting and, and repairing existing infrastructure, life safety issues, accessibility issues, I think it's right up our alley to be able to qualify. So with that, I'm just open for input on what and how much you'd like us to see, like to see us move forward with.
I know they did bonding bill this year also, and I was kind of curious, I looked at it briefly, I didn't get to dive into it too much, but some of the projects, like, maybe some similar stuff that we were looking at. And I know the big push is with the governor this year was safety for kids and every, you know, a lot of things that he was pushing through. My question is, is there something that we can address in a request that is maybe not just within the scope that we were looking at for the sales tax, but additionally, that maybe we left out, that was, we maybe should be in there? But I think some of the infrastructure costs that we have in there, you know, it's in one of the bullet points, is something maybe, one thing we got cautioned on when we were down there is that one of the questions, you're not asking for a bonding bill, too, are you? And that, Davis, he asked, that was his first question, too, you know, other than, what's your mascot? So, so I think that thinking of them going, okay, we'll do sales tax, but we don't want you to come back for bonding, and that worries me, not only past it, but I think that's something that we have to be careful of, because we heard it from more than one person, and we've heard it numerous times over the years, you know, if we're going to do this, we don't want to give you something out of there. So I was trying to match up, people were doing a sales tax and what was in that bonding list, and I didn't get too far today.
I, I haven't looked through the bonding that was awarded. I haven't looked through the bonding that was awarded this year, but there is some past precedent set in communities that have received bonding and are, have voted approvals for sales taxes. The first one that comes to mind is Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids, I don't know the dollar amount, but Grand Rapids received a bonding bill to replace the roof on their civic center, which is their ice arena. It was a multimillion dollar bonding bill and they have approved a sales tax to use on that exact same facility. That construction is happening this summer. I don't think Alexandria has a sales tax, but they have received bonding on repairs to their Runestone Community Arena and they use bonding and local fundraising to marry those two together to be able to accomplish what they wanted with the new arena. So there is a little bit of precedent in, certainly in bonding bills supporting facilities like ours. The other point Mr. Olsted about if bonding bill could fund elements of our projects that are not funded by sales tax, I think that's the right track to think. And I maybe am thinking of it almost in reverse order in that if the timelines line up appropriately, we would ask for bonding this year and should have a determination on bonding when the legislative session would end in June of 2024, end of May, before we would vote for a sales tax. And so I think we go with these infrastructure type projects, the accessibility, the roof projects, the parking lot repairs, and anything that we would get would then allow us to bring in more amenities that we currently are saying we can't fund by sales tax. It would allow us to now bring those back into the conversation and say, for this dollar amount raised by sales tax, now we can get ABC of, if you wanted to call it phase two or of the wish list instead of the need list.
With that thought process, the reason I was thinking outside what, because we have the parameters when we say this is what we're going to do a sales tax for. And then the timeline to get that to the state where they, you know, get it on, I worried that maybe that timeline, because when do we have to have that question to the state county so we can put it on the ballot? Is that August?
Yeah, August. Generally speaking, by our first meeting in August, we would need to approve the ballot question. Yeah, so there's, they're tight timelines, but we would need to work quick on that.
That's my only worry is that timeline there. But I guess we can, you can preload a list of things and, okay, hey, we, great, we got a bonding.
And taking a really hard look at how that ballot question needs to be worded so that it's, it's appropriate and accurate in what people are voting for.
Have to keep in mind the way these construction costs are going, that we could be needing 20, 24, 25, 30% more than what we currently have planned for.
I think it's 20 million.
Just saying.
I agree. Understand.
Just one thing to note that made me feel a little better about where we're at in our list that I provided on this, we use 9% per year inflation from our 2023 numbers, thinking of what it's going to cost us in '25. In the state's budget requests, they're using 17% inflation. So at least we're, at least we're on the same page between what we're planning and what the state's talking about.
Yales, have any input or thought process? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, my first question. It sounds like it works for us to make the bonding request and then what we would know before we move into the sales tax and the ballot question, tight in the summer, this time next year, I guess, we need to move quickly, but it seems like it works. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, you know, fulfill a lot of the wishes of the community while still having it within a sales tax increase that could pass. So I think we should put together a really good plan and make sure that it fits because obviously it'll be audited. So, you know, it can't be fluff, but we wouldn't do that anyway. And I think it's awesome.
Yep.
You think part of the conversation still needs to be, and I'm sure you're not neglecting it, but just for the conversation about fundraising. And the beauty of fundraised dollars is, you know, if by chance we get a yes on one of the two venues, the fundraised dollars become discretionary toward the one that didn't get funded, if that happens. And that too, those funds can go toward those priority items that didn't fit either into the sales tax or the bonding. So we'll want to really zero in on the fundraising part of it too. A lot of that will come in kind, you know, we've seen contractors step up and do a lot of the good heavy lifting on a project just as a donation. So we'll want to keep that on the radar also.
Absolutely.
I think, I mean, we can move forward and, I mean, what dollar amount were you even thinking for bonding?
I haven't. I'd hate to even say anything out loud. I haven't thought that hard on what that number would be.
Just write it down, slide it across.
Let me know, read how that's going, if you would please. I will gladly talk to our legislative folks so they know what we're up to. The other thing that you came close to talking about when we were down there, as much as some were saying, yeah, you're doing sales tax, don't do bonding with it, others were saying, just do bonding. Don't even bring us a sales tax proposal. We just, if it's anything, we should bond it. And so they come in on two different camps and we're happy to work with both of those camps because we're going to have to. And so, please.
I was going to say, it's very political.
Generally, the Republicans like the bonding more, for whatever reason. That's, that's the whiff that we were getting down there.
Till this year.
Yeah.
They didn't want to hear any.
Yeah. So yeah, let us know and we'll want to work with those folks early on to make sure they're not blindsided at the end. Thanks.
And I was going to talk about that. I'm sure glad, I'm glad you did. Just kidding. Anybody else have any input on this? See you in under, appreciate it. Thank you. Number four, request of direction on THC sales in current state legislative regarding marijuana. Ms. Nelson?
Hey. I'll also probably have Mr. Golsdood speak a little bit on this as well. But basically, information from the RCA, last year, state law took effect that certain edibles and beverages infused with THC are legal to sell. I have been informed, some of the businesses here in town have started selling those. So at this time, I don't know if we could put a moratorium on those items, but coming before, I do believe it's sitting on the governor's desk, recreational marijuana may become legal. And I know there's still a process that needs to be put in place on how that's going to be handled, but we're assuming it'll be very similar to how tobacco and liquor licenses are handled. So at this time, we, our staff would like direction from the city council on if you would like a moratorium in place so we have a little more time to draft an ordinance or if we should just start working on an ordinance. Some of it might, we might have to wait until everything's finalized at the state level. But I guess we would like direction from the council on how you would like to move forward. And I guess just so you know, and I did say in here, Polk County did approve a moratorium, but that does not cover any of the cities within Polk County.
And we got confirmation on that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think they approved a moratorium just on what the legislation or legislator was going to do for this recreational marijuana. Right now, it looks like, it's on the governor's desk. It's going to be at least a year before they are able to figure out dispensaries, so to speak, licensing process. Since this all came up, I, it's changed so often. I was just waiting for it to come out for the most part, to get back at the edibles. I don't believe, I'll look at it a little closer, but that we can, since there's, if there's a vendor will say that's already open, you can't take that right away from them. But going forward, we could put a moratorium on it. I would suggest if that's the thought process, that we'd go the moratorium route as opposed to just working on, on the ordinance before we know all the details of what they're going to do for licensing and dispensaries. I'm also going to, since this just came up, I'm enrolled in a seminar on Thursday to go over the legislative process and what it all means right now. And then two weeks from then, I've got another one on the legalization of marijuana that I'm looking at to get more information because it's all over the, all over the ballpark right now. So if you were, if it was your wish to be able to figure out where it could be sold, how it could be sold, you know, location, commercial, industrial, you know, park, whatever, I'd put a moratorium on it so that we can figure out where exactly we would potentially want and control what we can.
If I could, just for clarification on the moratorium that we are considering, it would only be for the marijuana type. So another option would be, and I'm not favoring it, you could put a moratorium on any additional THC gummies and whatnot. So the ones that are here could stay, but no more could be added. I don't necessarily favor that, but that would be the, the other way you could commit out the moratorium is, hey, if you're here, you're here, but no more. Then you're falsely creating a non-competitive environment for the ones that are already open, might not be a smart idea. So, but are you proposing the moratorium just for the future of the actual marijuana?
Well, we would do it for that. And right now, that's, what, what the county did was they just kind of did an all encompassing moratorium going forward. I could look at it a little bit closer to answer your questions, but as you looked, this was brought up when it was first, the edibles were start first coming out. I brought it to David's attention a couple of times and then the staff, I know it was the PD had brought it forward, at least a discussion in it. It never got any traction and it didn't go anywhere. So I'm, I'm not sure if we're behind the eight ball too much on that right now or not when it comes to the edibles. So I'd have to look at that a little closer, sir.
Check it out. Thank you.
Amazing questions. I think we go by, you know, guidance from our city attorney and, you know. My understanding too, that there's going to be some local control coming and going forward on these things too.
On certain things. We can have, we can't, well, we can have certain differences from the state. It just depends upon, I haven't had a chance to look through the legislation and how it's looked at right now. So I'll have better understanding on Thursday and then when I look through the complete legislation.
I did listen to most of the legislature on this and they have no clue how they're going to enforce it. Absolutely zero. There was nothing in there. I think, Chief, you probably might have heard that. I, I'm a little worried about it with no enforcement.
Well, we're dealing with this right now in court. Well, realistically, there isn't any criminal law enforcement for like DUIs or any of those things that has been thought through right now. I was in court all day on Zoom court and it's already raising its head when it comes to probation violations because they're already making the argument that this may or may not be a violation and in a couple of weeks, it might not even be considered a violation or illegal. However, there's still some federal law out there that says it's illegal, you know. So depending upon the circumstances that you're running into and who's stating or for what purposes, it could be butting up against federal law as well. So it's.
Two pounds at home and two ounces when you travel.
How do you get them home?
The guy, one of the, he was funny because he goes, it's like.
I need two pounds of Percival marijuana, please.
He says it's like 2,500 joints you can roll out of that two pounds and have at home. He goes, you're going to tell me that guy's going to do that and not sell it? All right.
It's, again, it's just kind of all up in the air and it's kind of work in progress and we'll take a look at it a little bit closer and come back with something.
Flashing back to Cheech and Chong here, just so you know.
You are old.
Does he doesn't beat her?
I'm sorry.
Number four, five, excuse me, consider agreement with bird rides. Mr. Golsdood, you probably need to sit down for this one too. So, Ms. Nelson.
Bird rides had reached out to the city to see if this is something that we wanted to allow within our city limits. Few things happened, I reached back out to them. They agreed to all of Mr. Golsdood's suggestions with the agreement, with the changes that he made. They're, they're on board, they're ready to go there. And before we started doing anything, I wanted to make sure the council was still on board. And if you are, then we'll have Ron start drafting the ordinance to regulate the use and start moving forward with bird rides.
What she said.
Anybody have any questions or?
You know, the main thing that I think that a person should include in this ordinance would be control on license and who can license the company and then knowing the contact information. A lot of it's already controlled by our, you know, we're saying in the memo that it has to follow our biking rules, the rules of the road, those types of things. And then the state law also has state laws regarding age and those types of things. I think it's, that would be important, but more important is actually who the vendor is and controlling the licensing process and where it can be done and how they're going to be picked up and those types of, of details regarding the, an ordinance.
I guess the only other question I would have at this time then, part of the agreement had hours of operation. In some places, it, they allowed hours of operation, 24 hours a day. Does a council, I think, I don't know if Ron had put this in there, but the revised one had included something like from 4:00 AM to midnight for hours of operation. Does a council, you know, is there a set timeframe that you would like to see for hours of operation or are you good with 24 hours a day?
You can always go back and try to, I suppose it gets tougher after you agree to something and go back.
The other thing that I did with that memorandum is I took out the automatic renewal and the reason I did that is we don't know what's going to happen right now. We can always try it for a year or whatever if this is the wishes of the council and then be able to say, no, we don't want it if it's too many problems or we could automatically have a renewal later on with that process.
Okay, we're leaving it the way it is.
They have it in there and highlighted about limiting the hours. Should we then take that out or leave it in, I guess is maybe the question.
Ron?
That was in their original, that was in their original memo and I had, I had initially highlighted it because I wanted it to be brought to your attention. I didn't have any recommendations on specific timeframes. It was just to bring it to your attention that we could limit the hours if we so chose. And if so, what would you like to, to do?
Maybe start 24 and then if it's a problem, we could then take out some hours if there's some reason to do it. This, just exactly like it says there, that we may choose to limit in the future.
Are you asking me?
I'd go for that.
Yeah, I mean, that's your preference. I guess I could take a look a little closer at what Grant Forks did because a lot of times it's, for these types of things, it's, it's not a bad idea to have something close or uniform regarding that so you're not having issues going back and forth across the river because you know that they're going to have.
I'm going to cross, yeah.
Crossing the river.
Anything else on that? Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. President. If these things are going to be allowed to run on the sidewalk. And I see them on the sidewalk down there and they clearly state by honor that they're not supposed to be, but I see them weaving it out between people and kids and everything else and it won't be a party if they're on the sidewalks. I would be against it totally.
I believe it becomes a part of enforcement because it would be against the ordinance or the rules even of bird that they be on the sidewalks with pedestrians are supposed to be, being utilized such as a bicycle. So that becomes an enforcement issue and a lot of times, not that we don't want to be a good neighbor to businesses, but those are the things that we have to think about because the police force is the ones that are going to be trying to enforce it and those types of things and whether or not it's feasible, depending upon the, the usage in the, of the. it's feasible, depending upon the, the usage in the, of the, of the cities.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Dale. If, so my concern is, say we have a bunch of issues with it right away, can we revoke the contract inside of the 12-month period if there's, you know, X number of violations of users riding on sidewalks?
I think what we can do is we can set it up any way you want on violations. And if there's so many violations, you can actually suspend the license until it's corrected. You can always do something on that line. And that's where the vending aspect of it comes in. Following the laws of being pedestrians or bicycle riders or, or whatever is the easy part, it's actually controlling the vendors and how we would be able to deal with them if they violate our rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick thought to that, Mr. President. Talking about the vendors, would there be a way, when you have a repeat violator, to feed that information to the vendor and they just can't rent it anymore? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yes.
Yeah, if we, is that anywhere in here, in the fine print?
That's just the memorandum that says they can go ahead and do it. The ordinance that we would be drafting would control the rules and the licensing and the violations and the penalties for violating.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on that? Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Number six, American Crystal, Veni and Wagon Food Truck Request. Ms. Nelson?
I've been contacted by American Crystal, who would like to bring food trucks on site for their, they have some things going on, and would like to bring a food truck on for their employees for a few weeks. They were having some issues trying to get food trucks there, and in doing, they want to help people out or try to entice them, so they wanted to pay the fee. Our current process for a food truck is $25 a day or $100 for the year. The food trucks would be on their property for multiple days, at least four. So it would make sense to do the year-long license. To keep their costs down, they're wondering if the fee could be reduced to $25 per vendor. And I can't just waive those fees, which is why this is coming before the council. And I guess my question is, and I kind of have it at the bottom, where these licenses could be specific just to the days that they are actually at American Crystal, or if you guys so choose, we could issue them to allow these vendors to be within the city for the rest of 2023. I guess whatever you prefer.
Mr. Golsdod, did you have something to add to that?
Could you just answer my question?
Do you have any thoughts on this? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, what does the, what is the fee intended to cover for the city's cost as part of these food trucks? Is there some inspection or?
So in recent years, we now have a fire inspection. In the administration office, we always, we work with the Department of Health. We have to check, make sure that they have been inspected and have a correct license where they can serve in the state of Minnesota. I have checked and asked if they are inspected with North Dakota, if there was a reciprocity, and if we could use that. That has not been allowed. They, the state does not want to record, they, they want to make sure they're, they're inspected and meet our standards. So, so in the last couple of years, we have added a fire inspection, where our fire department makes sure if they have used the gas, that everything is working properly. So hopefully, and they have, you know, a fire extinguisher, stuff like that. And as for the amounts, this is what they have been since as long as I've been here or longer. So I can't tell you exactly why, $25 a day or $100 for the year, but that is currently what they've been at for quite some time.
I know Megan and I have been, good intentions to look at it, but with our new duties, it's a little time-consuming to go through all these. I think from a vendor standpoint, that if Crystal's going to have them for four days and they pay a $100 license, they got a license for the whole year. Correct?
Yes, but American Crystal doesn't want
Only wants to pay the 25.
Correct.
Well, I'd only like to buy sugar at a certain price, too. So my guess is that we charge them, we stay with our, our thing here and leave it like it is, our permitting process.
I guess the question would be, with the vendors that are going to be here, are they locally, or have they had that opportunity? Do you spend other times during the summer here?
Some are from across the river that already have a Minnesota license. I think some are from not too far away in Minnesota.
I just can't believe you're going to have more than five or six. So you're talking 600 bucks?
Can I process that for?
I think we leave it at as it is. Personally, I think they can have the opportunity to utilize it for the full year. Gives them the opportunity to showcase to the rest of the community. So. Mr. Helms? Do you have something? Okay. Anybody else have anything? Look like you're ready to push the button. Anybody else have anything? There you go, Ms. Nelson?
Thank you.
Number seven, request to update ward resolution and map.
Okay. So last year, we followed the redistricting process. It's done every time following the census. And it wasn't until we were starting to help people look up what ward they were in for the primary, where we, there was a couple human errors when doing stuff, and those were corrected. But then we did find an error in the resolution itself, where we were off by one block. We had to make any changes 17 weeks prior to the election process, which would have had to have been completed in April, and we did not find it until, like I said, closer to the primary, so that probably July is when this originally came up. So at this point in time, our city charter requires that each ward is, we try to keep it as an equal in population as practically possible. And that block, I think with the census count, and this is not just voters, it's adults and children within that block. I believe it was around like 40 or 45. So it does make a difference in our ward counts. So I'm just asking that the council adopt the corrected resolution to make sure our numbers of population in each of the wards is as close as possible. I guess, do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Okay, we'll bring it forward next week, on the 6th. Perfect.
Entertainer motion adjourned.
Move.
Move, my Larson, second my veteran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.